No, not that I know of, but.
He's sitting versus.
Right, sit at his desk as we speak.
I'll text him.
Just FaceTime him at this point. Just kidding. Okay, um, I'll just, July twenty, no, we're August eleventh, I don't even know what month we're in, okay, let's start this over again. Oh, that's the, okay, so we're in August at some point, Saturday morning work session, um, the sixth?
Yes.
It's way early, eight o'clock in the morning, eight oh five something, I don't know, okay. Um, we'll start with Jesse, do you have anything? I'm just kinda going down, since Mark's not here, Mark usually does this, so. You usually do it, yeah, then, what are we doing? I'm letting them do theirs and then we'll do ours and then we'll go to legislation.
Yeah, that's fine, I was, I was.
Do you have something better to do?
I was texting Mark, which is why I was letting you talk, but.
I messed the whole thing up, so it's, it's obvious.
Well, yeah, so, yeah, let's do departments, Jesse, any, any big heads up? I had one question for you, actually.
Sure.
We'll do it next.
We had tabled the vacation of the right of way over there.
Yes.
Because we were waiting on.
We're still, we're still waiting.
We're still waiting, yeah, so it's, we're waiting on the, a re-redrawing of the lines.
Yeah, it's a minor thing and it's just, it's one of those things, again, all these folks are busy and we've been busy and so.
Yeah, I just wanted to, one of those residents had emailed me this week saying, hey, we've been out of town and saw that nothing has happened. What's happening, and I said, yeah, we're waiting on, we realized the lines weren't exactly right. And we, we need them, we're, we're, yeah, so I just, I told them I'd let them know when it comes back up.
Perfect, yep, that's all I had done.
All right, well, then the other department we got here is, uh, Mr. Clayner, what's, was doing?
Thanks, sir, um, Council Mayor, we have a few items, obviously, that are rated for, so, but I'm gonna, we could spend, we will need to spend probably a couple of discussion periods as we go through details, especially with our building, but we suc- we received a successful bid within the ten percent range. Uh, which is very exciting.
But only one?
What, only one, but that's.
That makes that decision choice a lot easier.
Yeah, honestly, it saves you another thirty days because you just spent thirty days comparing and contrasting things, so, there's pros and cons to that, uh, but that's the environment we're in, uh, what we can tell good company, um, so we're pleased to have them bid and we're looking forward to working with them with your folks' blessing and approval. We, I think, uh, believe, Mayor, step in when she needs to, but I think we're gonna have three meetings in August, so we can go through our three readings, we will be requesting emergency for obvious reasons, so we can get to work on it. We do not have, you know, there's obviously, like, a lot of devils in the details and this meeting isn't meant for that, but essentially, we will be coming back to you for a number of decisions, one of those will be alternates, we're going through some process now, maybe some of you knew, we, we put a bunch of alternates with the architect. Uh, there was some legal questions to whether, if you accepted all of those alternates, it would be above the ten percent bid threshold, so the question to our construction attorney is, is that kosher, is that okay? And he's sent me back a bunch of questions and the architect is out of town and will answer those and we'll have a, a decision for you, but easily before the second reading where we can have some more discussion on what alternates you would like to accept and the pros and cons of those alternates. And then there's, there's obviously other things as we step forward, maintenance buildings, the, one of the bigger ones, so we know we're gonna have some other options, uh, which I will, was talking to the mayor about yesterday, which, concerning how we'll, for me to keep that ourselves, how we're going to handle our administrative functions, you know, when we have to leave this structure, both for police as well as options, so we're working through a few other options, uh, both with our, you know, our township, uh, as well as what we can do for, uh, stuff on site. So, don't have all the answers today, but we'll obviously be working through them and present you with some options to consider going forward, uh, the other, other item, obviously, is your, um, your lake thing, which I think, your lake planning for Jacobs, which, uh, is just their proposal to accept, and then there'll be a whole year of, uh, lake planning. So, lots of exciting things happening here over the course of twenty-two to twenty-three, which is very good, uh, and for those of you who would like to on the walk, please have a look at the amphitheater wall, it is all finished, uh, we met with the mason yesterday who went over some, you know, details and concerns of, with the, what he had to do and the age, and there's still some work to do for prep, site prep work as we move forward, uh, but we think he did some phenomenal work, so please check it out. I think that's all I have at the moment, unless there's any other, uh, question, P and Z, which I'll just jump into, just, all we did was talk about, um, some details on, um, fences, what fence is, uniform fence code for the whole village, yada, yada, and then, um.
Poles, poles.
Thank you, poles, poles is another one, thanks, yeah, that's a, that's an ongoing one, primarily temporary poles.
I talked to Brian.
Yes, so that's what we got, thank you all.
Um, what, there's more coming with the amphitheater though, right?
Correct, correct, correct.
The ADA, you know that?
Yeah, we have, so, so in short, um, there's a little more site work to do because we've gotta pull away some of that dirt, as pointed out, so there's just a few more, smaller trees that are getting into the, I have to be rude, getting into the wall and degrading it on the one side, which just, you know, we'd have to clear it anyways for an ADA ramp to get around there regardless. It's what, but our major things to come back to you is concrete versus decking, uh, and, you know, I think our preference is gonna be concrete for a lot of reasons, but we'll, we'll discuss that. And then electrical work, coming left with that, so those are the two main things, and then whether or not we wanna bring, there's an interesting thing, yesterday, he used a pump system that brought water down for him to use from the lake, so he was able to make that happen, however, the reality is, we need some type, probably need some type of water service there for cleaning and for other things, you know, especially for, you know, for doing things down there, you know, so we, and so we'll have to just talk about that addition down the road, doesn't necessarily have to be this year thing, but, you know, but the two major things, concrete, electric, which we'll bring back to you.
Is that an expensive ticket item?
Oh, yeah. The, well, the electric, we, we did, we got some pre quotes, electric's right around probably thirty grand at this point, depending what you do, right? The basic stuff, electric service, thirty grand, will depend on some AEP cooperation goes up, if AEP doesn't cooperate with the pole, we think they'll cooperate, but it's AP. Beyond that, then, um, concrete, also around thirty to forty, depending what we do, concrete decking, both are comparable in pricing, we just.
I just asked about the water specifically because we have that grant, right, and if we could tie it into that.
Yes, it, it would.
Rather than.
The electrical's going overhead, or is it?
Well, it has to come, so you know how we have some, some minor poles that come across there, the electrician came out, had a look at it, uh, there was one of the larger construction confirms, so he, he knows his stuff, so he said, he said, yeah, he said, if AEP cooperates with moving that service and bringing it over here, down this pole, it'll save you twenty grand, if they cooperate.
But, well, no, I was asking, since the, that, that, but's the dam, I'm just trying to think how we could even get water.
Well, it, well, well, I think water service would come, if we're talking water service.
Yeah.
Water service comes in from the roadway, so water service, pipe would come in, and, you know, we, we have grade that comes down, we could access wherever the pipe is and then bring it down behind everything, not impacting the dam at all, it would be, it would be in that bowl.
From the, so from Green Line Way?
Green Line or Minerva Lake is right there, I mean, Minerva Lake cuts right across behind there, so we, we have room to bring the pipe across from the, from the water line, so we, we can get a tap from that location.
It do, isn't, but there's a stream between both.
Yes, there, there is a stream between both, remember, the water line's gonna be, depending on how it is, it would be, again, depending on how the water line's designed.
Yeah.
We can, we can get access to it and how we do it, whether we turn it off in the wintertime, there's several different options.
There will be no bargaining getting water there, right, 'cause it's, it's gonna be long, it's gonna be at least.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's hundreds of feet of, of, of ditch to dig.
Yeah.
Right.
And a stream across.
I'm just saying, if.
Remember, you approved.
I'd rather the payment of it come out of.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Funding that we have.
So, so you approve, you approve.
I mean, you approve up to eighty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, you have fifteen grand to approve, that fifteen grand gets you roughly thirty grand of state money, right, just so we're all clear, so it's a two-third match type thing. It's, yeah.
So, it works.
Right, it's not gonna be cheap, like when I run up to Home Depot.
No.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, no, no, you're, you're right, it, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost some ten grand area-ish plus.
When do we, I'm just.
We haven't quoted yet, I'll get a quote, yeah. Well. Yeah, so, so essentially, depending on how things go here with contractors, right, and so, obviously, there's a lot of stuff, I'll bring back, the next step will be, uh, concrete, so we're gonna go out and get some quotes for the concrete again, 'cause we did that prior to this whole process, we need to give, uh, quotes, let you see the difference in decking versus concrete, pick a bid, move forward with that, uh, and that'll include the excavation, stuff like that, and then we'll come back for electric, now, again, we have probably until November to get electric up and stuff like that, so that's probably not a big a deal, so we anticipate we can be done with the majority of the items in the amphitheater this year, so really by springtime, you guys could ha- you guys could work from a community standpoint with having a full slate of stuff next year, right? If you wanna do movie nights and get those scheduled in, you wanna do entertainment nights, you'll have a whole, whole season and stuff, yeah.
I'm just thinking also with the timetable of when do we start discussions about legislation around how it's used, or.
About the what?
How the, how it's gonna be used, like, what, who can have events, what's how to use that type of, how much it's gonna cost.
Sure, sure, I would say toward the end of this year, discussions, and you can pass everything you need before, before you start here in March, I say as early as time you could use it, maybe, maybe April is reasonable month to start use.
I'd suggest you just start that whenever you're ready in community, and community can draft up, you know, at least a guideline, and then, if, if you want legislation, or, once you draft that guideline, get with Jesse to turn it into a real bit of ordinance, and then just hand that off to legislation, who will review, put it right in.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Then we can talk, talk fee schedule related to that too, if that's related, so.
Yeah, 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 we'll just bake it right in, right, just say, refer to fee schedule and, we'll just update the fee schedule.
That's right.
'Cause that's the beauty of that.
It is.
And just so everyone else knows, since I emailed you, I did ask Eric about the Dora and where we're at with it.
And that was, and I said I was gonna get with Jesse and we're gonna talk some strategy with Liquor, and just so you know, Jesse, I just emailed and said, hey, with my experience with other private projects with Liquor, sometimes it's better just to put in the formal application and that forces their hand to review, and then we can start that discussion.
Yeah, at least, I mean, that forces them to deny us if they want.
Yeah, I agree.
That means at least no.
So we'll proceed in some form.
And that denial usually comes with a, what could you do to make it, uh, make it fly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This one will definitely earn a meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, very, very off the wall, so, yeah, exactly, worth a shot.
We'll get a meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what's the likelihood that we won't get a Dora, you know?
One hundred percent.
I don't, I don't know, I would say.
I don't think it's good, but I think it's worth a shot.
Yeah, I think it's arguable.
It is, and they very much defer, they do, they really do defer to the local authority on it, it's just the fact we don't have like a brick and mortar place with, like a Mike's Bar.
But, yeah, but, but see, I think, I think that's what's part of the application processes, I think, I think it's a, as a, to handle this, I think we have two addresses, and I think it's good back, we'll need a CIC, no matter what, so we can throw, and it's not hard, we can throw together the word CIC, council could approve that. We can put in our, our kind of application for those two brick and mortar locations we have, um, for what we need to do, I mean, this is just my conceptual strategy with them, and then we can talk about establishing the Dora post those issuances of those licenses, because you're gonna have to get those licenses issued regardless.
Right.
To qualify for your Dora.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
I, I know we have, there's a piece of property on the service road over here.
Yeah, it is.
At Bankett, I wonder if we could entice someone to purchase that with a liquor license.
Yeah, nobody.
Just remind me real quick, are we talking, we're talking about our small piece, or what are we talking?
It's the little piece by the, uh, uh, funeral home and the inn, innist, what is it?
Inkske.
Printing, Inkske, yeah, there's a little plot of land in there.
Oh, the bear, the bear lot?
Maybe, I think they used their house there at one point, got torn down.
How much?
I don't know, I mean.
I don't know.
Tell me, give me a price.
All right, so that, that's viable, depending how big that site is, we'll, we'll, we'll do a little research and.
Can't we put one in the strip mall somewhere?
Is the strip mall part of our?
It's within our jurisdiction, it's within our jurisdiction, so we, we could, again, we're getting into more complicated items.
Sticking to it could be a bar.
Do we want the door to extend?
I don't.
The problem with the strip mall is we want the door to extend all the way out to Cleveland, that.
So, so the door, yeah, the, the door, we can, you, you can set your.
Oh, yeah.
You can set your parameters of your jurisdictional.
Oh, yeah, it could just carve out that, like, part of it and then around it.
Boundaries, yeah, once we get approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, but from an enforcement standpoint, if the idea is that people are going to, you know, Gordon's to buy their beer for the Dora, you know, once they're at Gordon's.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's, we may wanna avoid that.
How do you funnel?
Right, right.
Oh, interesting, that strip is owned by one of the Inkske folks too, in trust, so we'd have the, that's, I did not know that, actually, I wasn't paying attention, 'cause some of that stuff disappears also.
So, I know that's a big can of worms, but.
I don't know, and I don't know, I think the reason is, uh, that's not within, within our boundaries, hold on a second.
You're talking between the Inkske printing and Newcomers?
Yes, yes, it is, sorry.
It must be.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just looking up, I just wanna be official.
Yeah, I remember seeing an article about a old house that used to live there, be there and they had it torn down.
Yep, it is. Yeah, 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 so that's interesting, that, that's, uh, we should, well, since that's within our jurisdictional boundaries, we should definitely be advertising that in some form for economic development purposes, right? Yeah, but we could talk about some zoning on that later, so, what you wanna see there, so, good, good bring up.
So, maybe what we need to do is figure out first steps on that with the CIC and all of that, and get that ball rolling, 'cause it sounds like that's gonna be.
Yes. Yeah, I would say, I would say, again, conceptually, your first step is, you gotta make the application for two, we need minimum two brick and mortar establishments with licenses, so we need to have some, we have to have those in place prior to moving forward with the Dora, right, so we gotta get them to get those approvals anyways, and so that will revolve around the CIC setup, so we should, I'll get with Jesse, we've done CICs in other municipalities, we'll get you some legislation to continue, you can activate that, set up your board for the CIC, which there's a lot of different flavors, and we'll go from there, and then we'll put in, the board will then, that CIC board will then authorize through the village, we'll have a partnership, an MOU, whatever, to utilize those spaces for officially holding those licenses, so, we'll, we'll see what we need to do, it might be the village can put in the application, since it's our property direct first, and Jesse, I don't know the full answer on holding the liquor permits, given that they're private, you know, handled in this kind of strange way.
Right.
Whether we need the CIC to hold them or we can do them first, that's the only question I've got, so we'll, we'll figure it out, we appreciate it.
Okay, so, Brian, it's you.
Oh, back to me.
No, I mean, you're just leaving this, 'cause.
Yeah, 'cause it's my meeting, all right, well, that, that gets us through Village Official Reports, let's, uh, Communications, Nikki.
All right, um, let me see. So, uh, we did work, me and Barb's been working on the email, you know, we originally looked at Unico, which was gonna cost us six hundred dollars a year, um, we have decided that we're going through MailChimp, I sat with Barb yesterday, we're really getting some of the templates done, she's already sent stuff out, so I think that's important that, you know, Unico was also so confusing, Barb's being able to do this by herself as well, so it's, it's, it's new stuff for her, which I think is just, not only is it saving us money, but it, it's friendly, that, you know, that way she's able to do it and stuff. Um, so we're working with that, uh, we'll have like weekend reviews every week, uh, anytime that we need to put out, like an emergency thing, just the same way as our text, we can do that by email, we have multiple people already signed up, so people are definitely interested. Please with pancakes this today, so we pushed the communications for that, um, chatting with council the next day is September twenty-ninth, um, and, and again, we, who, for who is there, it did kinda run over, so kinda like fine tuning it, figuring out, you know, how to do that, how to make it a time limit without making it too formal, um, so I did send an email out and Councilperson Berger said, let's discuss the capital projects, uh, building lakes and perhaps the garage and the ways that we plan to spend the tip money, so, um, also touch on the amphitheater, so do like a fifteen minute overview and then just, whatever time's left, then allow residents to ask questions, I do think when we do the presentation, be like, we have limited this meeting to an hour, so let's all keep that in mind, again, you, you wanna respect our vice times. Survey, I did start working on that, I know everybody's busy right now, so with all this other stuff, survey's kinda been pulled in the back, um, so I'm starting to go over that and I'll send you guys all another additional copy that we can kinda look through, what do we wanna add, what do we, what do we wanna revise, um, a couple opinions been brought up about some of the questions about, you know, our law enforcement, um, things that I never even thought of, so anything that you guys that we need to add or revise, I think that's important.
If I may on that, um, so I remember we talked some time ago, and I had reached out to the gentleman who assisted us with our last survey, he had already, he sent me back a quote, and it's only, it's only a couple grand for the electronics, if I don't know if I forwarded it to him or not, if, if council.
He said he can tailor it, how we want.
Yeah, so whoever would like, if, I mean, if you're willing to allocate that money, and I would say, just have him work with Nikki direct to re, to redesign, so she's leading the way on the survey, happy to support it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and it's something like, like what you said, it should be something we do every year, every other year.
Yeah, two years.
It keeps us knowing exactly how we can, you know, communicate, right, sorry, guys, it's early.
It's all good.
MPC, uh, MPCA, oh, no, that's next, that's it, that's all I have.
Yeah, just throw it in.
Roll right in, roll right in.
MPCA, so, uh, we've talked to Jesse and Kerry Jarca and the other MPCA officers, so we are starting their swag, um, we're, we're, we're kinda keeping it together to where we had to legally look at the financial ways that the village can accept money, because we wanna do forty percent MPCA, forty percent to the village of any swag that we sell, but then also twenty percent to each individual artist that, that designed these things, we wanna give back to our artists within our residents, or, or, our neighborhood. So we're working that out, the, the legal aspects of that, um, and there's quite a few, like, some amazing ideas, um, we went back through some of the newsletters and we found out, again, it's, if it's over twenty-five years old, we have free range, right? So, some of the old illustrations that were used in the newsletter in nineteen seventy, I mean, we can use those, and there's just some really good ideas, we also came across that MPCA used to have a flag, so how cool is that, I think that'd be really cool to do, um, so we're just kinda fine tuning that, next meeting, August tenth, um, upcoming events is their August thirteenth, their movie night, Garage sale is September twenty-fourth, and their block party, which I don't know if they've actually discussed the date, I thought they did.
Just posted on Facebook last night about eleven.
Uh, maybe that's September nineteenth, send that.
Okay.
I assume same location.
So, September nineteenth.
My Monica sent out, posted it last night.
Okay.
August twentieth, the Lion and Cheese or Sippin' Dip, whatever.
Yeah, that's the weekend after, I think, the movie night is what I saw on the calendar, um, I just have one thing for everybody to keep in mind, um, the September twenty-ninth date, this is me saying this, not Eric, we'll get a guy, we'll get a little bit of a update from construction schedule, assuming council passes it, um, September twenty-ninth might be a little rough in here, only because we may be moved out of here, or in the process of moving, I don't know that there's gonna be tables and chairs and, so we might wanna consider contacting Hawthorne as either a, a backup, or Minerva France, and I'm just speaking ahead, and we may be totally fine, but if we.
Your school will be on.
Correct.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
So. Yeah, it would be really cool to do that, so, I'm not saying we'll be out of here, I'm not saying you're gonna be homeless and you can't have this meeting, but I'm saying we might wanna have an option, yeah.
Safe, better safe than prison.
Having reviewed all those old villagers, if you're calling that for useful stuff, there's a lot of problematic stuff and all that too, so just, just be mindful.
Be what?
Meaning like, eh, the, the, the tenor of the neighborhood was very different.
Oh, one thousand percent, one thousand percent.
Yeah, 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 so just, just know that, that, 'cause I also called through there looking for.
Yeah.
'Cause, you know, at one point we were concerned that all the, all the digitized stuff was gonna be lost because the volunteer that was housing it was going away, and so I downloaded it and personally backed it all up, and, and reviewed a fair amount, and I was like, oh my God, I can't believe anybody wrote those words, or drew that picture, or said that about somebody.
We can use some of them, I wouldn't say that they're gonna do it.
I'm just saying.
People got named a wreck.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there, there's one where, like, they name a guy who was jogging, and they're like, watch out for the potholes he left behind him, I'm like, what?
Yeah.
What?
No, it's a gross thing.
Oh, it was, it, it, it did not, it's, it did not seem, yeah, that's so, just.
That was their Facebook.
It was not nice.
That was their Facebook.
Like the, the fraternity shirts that pop up, I'm like, oh my God.
A lot of times, I mean, sure. When you're pulling anachronistic things, like, you know, the intentions may not always match up.
Correct, and then I only have one other thing, um, the newsletter, Diane had asked if we were ready to do, um, our extra insert, last year or earlier this year, we did an extra insert, it's a couple hundred dollars, we were trying to do it once a quarter, once every like three months for additional information, so, um, one thing it could be used for is, again, update on lakes, building, you know, all of that, I don't know if we're ready for it, so, between September and October is when she would like to do that extra insert, so I'm just really reminding everybody that the extra, we're at the time for the extra insert, we could also not have anything to do, it could be all about the amphitheater, it could be all about, um, people not cleaning up their dog poop, like, it, it could be more of a zoning type newsletter, it could be, you know, what to expect in the wintertime, I mean, I don't care what we do, but September, October, you guys think about it, um, the deadline is around the twentieth of this month.
I think capital improvement, including amphitheater, but building lakes, right, that's, that's.
Right.
That's the important stuff.
So.
And it is good to get that out, and now if we say, we've got a, you said between September and October, or September and August?
So, the epis- the episode, the episode for, um, I've gone home, like, the twentieth of, um, August is when this one's gonna be due for September, so if we're not ready for that, then around the twentieth of September, it would come out in October.
It, it feels like we're gonna be more ready to give a valuable update, that second one around.
Correct. I agree.
We should just plan to do that then.
So, around, um, mid-September, we need to have some articles written for, so I'll get with Nikki on that to see who wants to, um, add some information, how, decide how we wanna do it, so, but I will let Diane, I, I promised Diane I would have that, which date we're gonna do it, um, and we were reached out, they reached out to us from, just to make sure nobody has an issue with this, um, the PTA from the new school had asked about advertising in the newsletter or getting just the basic PTA information in there, so of course, my thought was, I don't have a problem doing it, but we have to do Hawthorne's too, and basically, not, and, and I, I know there's, you know, some, whatever, I was just thinking, here's the contact information, I don't wanna get, somebody said, well, it could be political and you're putting it in there, not if you're doing both politically. And it's just an email address and here's the website, so.
Politicized, but itself is not political.
Yeah, well, will we, if I could suggest that instead of making an ad, someone should go write an article.
Well, that's what I was thinking, it's just doing like, here's the contact information, or more of a fact.
As an ad does, yeah.
So.
Well, because an ad, they should be paying us, but we should gladly give them the space.
That's what I, I mean, I was, that was my plan, is I was just gonna let both schools, you know, put their informa- give me their information, their contact information for people to sign up, where to direct them to, and at least it's in there for everybody, so.
Three hundred words on your PTA and everything someone needs to know about it.
For school resources, your, your.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
School resources.
So, I didn't have a problem with that, and they just asked if we had some extra space, so we told them that it would probably be when we did the insert, that there would be a little extra space at that time, if not, we'll get it in there this week, but that was part of that conversation, I just wanna make sure nobody had an issue with doing both schools the same way, and just having that information in there for people.
I'm fine disavantaging Hawthorne too.
I don't know, since we're talking about the newsletter, I'm noticing that we're having a lot of ads in it, like, over a full page of that, you know, you already have a back section of just the address on it, and then there's at least a full page of ads.
So that's MPCA, so we don't do anything with that, like, our page is still our page, we don't advertise on ours, um, so our page is strictly village stuff, and they're just collecting money to do that, so.
It helps them because that's their, that is the biggest expense for them, and that's, I mean, I work in print newsletters and all that, has been up drastically, so.
Right.
Maybe they need to look at the price of their advertisement.
I've mentioned that numerous times, they charge like fifty dollars to advertise for like the whole year and you can't, I mean, it's ridiculous.
We're not to carry that.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I, I.
It would be more visible.
Are this demographic for the whole year?
No, and it might be a hundred or something like that, it's, all I can tell you is it's ridiculously cheap.
Still. Yeah, that is ridiculous, right, that's a great.
Crazy, and that's why you don't have them all at all.
I mean, I didn't know that, I gotta pump point out to some people who want to advertise for this kind of oasis of demographics right here.
Well, I used.
I'm on the waiting list, I mean, you have people that are staying, those business card size.
They definitely need to raise it, they got a waiting list, it definitely has to be a lot.
Well, the prices have gone up a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
No, I did it before I was mayor and I don't do it now because I'm mayor, but it was, I mean, that's how I know how cheap it was, I'm like, this is stupid, like, why are you guys not, and it's not, they, I know why, they, you know, again, they're, they're trying to do the thi- the same reason that we don't up the prices at the concession stand, we're not trying to, you know, it's.
They're looking to cover costs.
They're looking to cover, yeah, they're looking.
Not make profits, it's not a fundraiser for them, it's a, it's a cost stabilization.
But at some point, yes.
It should be reasonable.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, it should be reasonable to market and.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I did go to the MPCA Pride Planners event, it's just so everyone knows, and they're, they're planning to do it again, I think it's the last Saturday in June, I believe so.
Next year.
They're looking at ten to two, so, you know, if that's possible, I know we have some discussions around.
I, I would say.
That will be part of communities, uh, discussions.
You had a really good, yeah, you had a really good idea as far as the pool hours and things like that go for next year, so, yeah, that's, I, I would just say, we need to have a bigger conversation about that because it's, I mean.
Short, it's too short.
I think the only big thing, uh, well, could potentially be, but you were talking about Fourth of July parade, they're talking about a parade possibly for Pride next year, so just, you know.
Speaking of that, sorry, guys, you know, I really wanted to do the Fourth of July parade for NCC, we should really be supporting them as much as possible, I know that a lot of people couldn't do it, but the only reason I didn't do it is because MPCA had the thing on their car, can we please order the Village Minerva Park magnets that we can put on our cars? 'Cause I would really love for us to be able to do that next year.
And I think it's one of those things that we didn't do it for two years and it was just one, yeah, everybody's, I mean, again, I don't have an issue doing it, it's just, yeah, it's one of those things that a month before, or three weeks before, we always do stuff on Fourth of July, but if I know we're doing it, I'll make sure that I'm there, so.
Let's put in the budget to rent a really cool convertible.
Lambo.
I've got a Volvo you can borrow for free.
Okay, I will talk to Leah about getting some of that stuff because, uh, we're getting ready to order some other things around here, so I'll talk to her about getting a door magnet for a car.
Oh, like a big one?
Yeah, like the side that goes on the car, whichever car you use, I think we should have probably a couple.
Yeah.
I have, I have an example I should show you, so, they're nice, I got one from Powell, they replaced them, I kept mine, I worked there years ago, so.
We can even check to see the place where you ordered, how big it is, how big of one they sell.
We do.
Yeah, oh, you do, and then, yeah, just fine, then just go ahead and do it and get us the thing.
I didn't work there.
Yeah, just see if you can do that, maybe like, six of them.
Yeah, you were there when I.
That'd be.
Two for three different.
Yeah, they've changed significantly since that time, right?
Yeah, that'd be so.
They have good administration, they have good council.
Okay.
So finance, so that was, thank you, uh, Nikki for MPCA and communications. Finance is next on the list, which we don't have anything particular to update on at the moment. We'll need to get with Jesse and schedule something to start talking about the twenty twenty-three budget.
And I know that's coming soon, soon, soon. So.
Yep, but we'll, when he, he'll be there, um, Thursday.
Yes, he will.
We'll, we'll get it scheduled then.
Yes, perfect.
Stacy for streets.
Stacy for streets. Okay, so, um, walked the site with the engineers, basically got caught up on everything. There's a couple of things that we're still waiting on for DJX to finish. They were supposed to finish it in the last few weeks. I, I think it's taking longer because there's another backordered part, surprise, surprise, which is annoying, but they're trying to, um, just have one site visit and just be done with it. Um, there is a pile of trash still in front of my house that I'm like not super thrilled about.
I saw that.
I, I talked to Brian about it and he said he wasn't able to do anything about it because it's just too much stuff in there, but they took the porta potty away. So I'm a little confused by that because won't they need the porta potty and not the trash? Like, won't they need the porta potty? Where are they gonna go when they come back?
What's this, what's this situation?
Over on, um, East Shore, the East Shore Court project. They, they do. They have a pile of trash. The other thing is, is I don't know that Brian.
But if they're not doing any more work, then they're, they're done with their primary.
No, they're not done. They're coming back.
They're not done. And they have to fix that sewer they crushed.
Do they have more than, you know, there's a certain amount of work.
Yeah, they're probably.
If they're not, if they're not there for weeks on end, if they're just standing for a day or two, they don't need a porta potty.
No, probably, cause they're paying for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that trash kinda needs to go.
And then we've got the.
And it's, the grass isn't growing there because of that.
Yeah, which is why we had to move the other things.
Yeah.
We had some, we had people, we had somebody put piping and stuff back there, but it was killing the grass. So we went and moved it. And I don't know that that's been.
Still walking around.
Oh, I know.
Um, anyway, so that, then I walked the Jordan Road situation to the best of my ability. I drove some of it, um, on the other side. We talked about the planning of doing a pipe, which is, I think, outside of our budget versus like more of like a giant shr- French drain. We're gonna call it a French drain, not a ditch.
It's a ditch.
Uh, and there was one structure that was in the way from, um, a clearing perspective. I took, talked to that resident. He was okay with us clearing that structure. The next step is to, um, have a meeting with the Jordan Road residents like you.
Yes.
And talk about the options. And I think the best way to do it is like, I was talking about like doing it from like a surgical consent perspective, like you could do A and this is the likelihood of this will go forward. We can do B, this is like a alternative, but not as good, or we can do C, which is do nothing and this is what's gonna happen if we do nothing.
Yeah, well, that's one option.
Yeah.
So we only have A and B.
Well, I mean, you always wanna present it as like, well, we can, but we shouldn't.
Yeah.
Um, so I think three options would be good. We need to call a meeting. I don't know if you wanna call it with everybody on Jordan Road at the same time or if we, we wanna do it with like three or four people and then say, hey, this is how it's gonna affect your property. Give them a chance for now.
I would rather do it larger and give it to everybody at the same, uh, cause it's not that many people. You're also gonna have some not come and at least I, with your availability and everybody's availability, I think it's gonna be difficult to do five meetings and we're paying Mike Flickinger every time he comes out.
Okay. Yeah, so we're gonna do one meeting, um, just for budgetary reasons as well. Um, and talk about the next step.
Did I see we missed the window, the window change for zero percent loan application?
Yes. Yep.
Yep.
Yes. Um, and then, you know, there's, there's a conversation to be had with, um, finances to how much, you know, if we do the five hundred thousand dollar project, how much money do we need? Um, how much money do we already have? And we have a chunk of it. I mean, we don't have five hundred thousand set aside for that, but, I mean, we have probably well over twenty-five to thirty-five percent of it simply without doing anything. I mean, we, so this project is not as far out of reach versus waiting another year and a half, um, for residents, you know, again, it's like the East Shore Court project. You know, the longer you wait, the more damage you're gonna continue to have these residents have.
More expensive it'll get by the year.
And more expensive and all of that. So I think that there's gonna be some good options. Maybe we can go out there and shovel a couple, couple ditches ourselves.
I'm not doing that. Okay. Um.
I tried to save you guys some money.
We rent a back road.
But yeah, the record company doesn't wanna be digging ditches in the summer.
No, I'm not doing that. I'm not doing a ditch, thank you.
So, we need to get with Mike and figure out a date or two for that. I know he'd already given us some that did not really work out. So.
Yeah, yeah, those dates.
I only have one week that I can't do between now and the end of September. So.
Can we do it? This week's really good. Like, maybe next.
We've gotta get time to make sure that we let the residents know as well.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I would say, I leave the twenty-eighth, so maybe that week before that would be awesome.
Okay.
Like any, that gives us almost three weeks.
Okay, um.
So let's see if we can put something together for him that week.
And then I have a question for Mike that we need to talk about, which is like, what's gonna happen with the, the voltage? Cause we're moving the location of it. So is it gonna get filled in or is that like in the budget too? So, um, yeah, cause that's kind of like a little dangerous over there.
Yeah.
Anyways, um, that's the update for that. There's a lot of stuff.
And the streets report should be in anytime.
Um.
Have we seen it? I don't think so.
So, what do you mean for that?
The street analysis.
The street analysis is in.
We're just waiting for him to look at it, maybe?
He sent it to us, yeah.
Oh, we have it? I haven't seen it yet. Okay.
Yeah, so they talked about some stuff.
Okay.
In there. It's like eleven pages or.
Might be your email.
But I'm sure it's in my email.
Yeah, it's in there. It's not too bad. I think Maplewood is the one that's, that needs to be addressed.
Still, okay. Well, that's good that that came back on the report again.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's the only, I think that was the only failing. So, um, that's something to consider too. I don't know.
We've talked about that project for probably five years.
Yeah, so that's something we need to talk about as well. So we need to have like a streets meeting, um, at some point soon.
Awesome. All right.
All right, moving on down the line, uh, Tracy and Community.
All right, so, um, so I've started doing just a little bit of research on security cameras for the basketball court area, just trying to see what's available out there. Nothing really to report yet, but just kinda seeing what's out there.
Even I should talk then.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of experience setting things up in different municipalities on these remote sites.
Right, yeah. Perfect. Yeah.
Go over stuff.
Um, but just because of.
Paul and I didn't get on that train at the station. We're doing what? The basketball court site?
Whatever that we talked.
Cameras.
Oh, cameras, but yeah, years ago, we had all the issues and.
Security cams.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, I have not heard many complaints lately. I'm not saying I haven't heard any, but.
They just took two guns two weeks ago.
No, that was not in two weeks ago. That was the last big thing and that was like a month ago. Um.
That's before I went to, what do you wanna call that?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we just had the lock.
It's been, it's, it's actually been about six weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had the locks cut recently on both of the things.
Yeah, though I didn't, I didn't notice the locks were cracked.
Yeah, and strudgered it through, so.
I was gonna.
Okay.
I think cameras would really help.
Yeah, they would.
I honestly do. I think it would deter.
But anyways, you know, I think that's something we need to look at for next summer.
Oh, I totally agree.
And just installed over there.
Just to jump on that train. So, cause now I'm, what are we doing with the shelter? Are we, cause that would solve a lot of issues and that, we could put cameras on them and that, that's what it would have to do then.
So. I have started getting prices, I've started getting some prices for a little bit smaller. Um, I think that was one thing that people had asked for, um, something that maybe just has four, five picnic table size to where you're not having the big large. Um, and then just take it from there and bring it to council. I mean, uh, yeah, PNC had asked me to bring it back to them because that was their recommendation. So.
Yeah, and we, we have gotten away from that because we've been busy with a lot of things. I, I know you have. I just mean.
Oh, I haven't. I mean, I, I think it's letting it settle a little bit because I know that, you know, we have some bit of pushback.
But once we, once we put that, it'll be easy to electrify that. We'll have direct connection. We can even put a direct spectrum or whatever wire up. Otherwise, we've gotta, if we put a camera on a pole, the issue is we've gotta get wireless connection to it from somewhere, which is a little tricky.
So having a structure would, would.
Yeah, structure will solve a lot of issues. So, and it'll, and I think then we can finally put that in the ground. Uh, whatever size you decide, I mean, I'm not a fan of bigger, you could fit on that site because I think it's gonna be a heavy used.
Oh, I think it's gonna be heavy used. I'm just trying to meet in the middle and get some options. The other part to that is, um, it becomes over fifty thousand dollars if we do the larger.
Correct.
Or barely under fifty if we do the smaller. So, you know, putting it out, um.
I always designed it to have two smallers.
Well, and I mean, right, it boils back down to the same conversation we have with numerous things with the maintenance, not to bring that up, maint- you know, what, what is an appropriate size? What, you don't wanna build one for four picnic tables and realize that it's stupid, you know? I mean, nobody can use it. It's one.
But I think, if only we had a charter. I think at this point, we'd limit, uh, that was set to two hundred thousand. Well, here, here's the thing with the bid limit justice you're sitting here. I think in this particular interesting case, I think, let's say we're fifty-five thousand. We just, we would just need to put out a request for proposal online.
Sales understanding.
Two-week period, three-week period, whatever the bid, same thing as we, just on a smaller, it's a smaller scale. We don't have to have a giant architectural designs.
See, I was under the impression as soon as it hits fifty.
Fif- yeah, if the intention is fifty, you need, you need to follow all ORC bid requirements. Yeah. We, we would, but, but as far as the documentation, we don't, we don't have, we don't have an architect in this case because the companies that do them, they're, they're standalone, you know, buildable structures that they bring on site and, and build. They've already done all of that work. So all you really need to do, I believe, is put out their request proposal in some form, and I use that in a general term, in order to meet those requirements.
I think that's probably true when there is no design
Yeah.
or oversight required. Like it's a, it's a prefab.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what this is.
It's really, it's not even a bid here. The bid is, here's our billing. Yes, this is what it costs to plot that. I'll make, I'll make a note, not verify that, but I'm pretty sure.
And that'll solve again.
Yeah, that'd be much more simple.
And then we can do the.
No, because we're gonna put, we're gonna put out our quotes anyways. It's gonna take.
Well, exactly.
And so it'll be the same time period.
So it just, I mean, I think that the biggest part is, is, you know, we had come up with the size, um, just from, you know, talking and doing all of that. I mean, that stuff is all ready to go.
Yeah.
We had emailed him again last week just to ask how much lower it would be if we made it, you know, significantly smaller and it was like six thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I don't know, and I don't know necessarily puts into, remember, there's, there's other pieces of that.
Right.
No, because we can also, I remember correctly, we were talking about conduit to the street. I don't know if that was all included, but we can put that all in of our requirement.
Right.
You know, as far as wire, making sure it's wired up, then they, then those guys will get you a small sub and that cost would all be in one reliance at that point, which I think is important. So, it'll be done.
So, yes, that is still, I, I still have it. I still have it right there. Um, and again, that is being funded by, um, Parkland Fund.
Yes.
We have the money for Parkland Fund. This is not hitting general fund. This is not, I'm not asking for anything. This is, this is, uh, this has been a discussion. Um, that's where the funding's coming from. So, just so, and can that be fun, in, in full, could that be used somewhere else? Yes. Um, as far as the Parkland Fund goes. So, but this is doing something big with the money to actually show other than buying trash cans and benches. There you go.
If it is really something as low, you know, if we are talking the range, the Dollar Ranger we were just talking about, we could probably use the TIF financing for that too. I mean, that's, that might be a smarter use.
We'll have a wider discussion of obviously TIF financing by the second meeting. And I typically say that because I, what you're gonna see from the bid standpoint is that unfortunately, we, we probably ate up our miscellaneous amount for pathway. So we're, now we're just talking about the major.
No problem.
The three major.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No problem.
Um, so, yeah, back to you.
Okay. Oh, that was a change too. Um, so gardens, I think that's a concern. I've been hearing more and more about it's kind of our public gardens and getting them back to where they need to be. I think, I think public spaces is a little beyond community, but I think that has been rolled into that a little bit. Some, around some of the ponds is looking a little unkept and, um, trailer park-ish, I'll just say it. Um, yeah, so, um, I think one thing I remember, Eric, I believe you talked about where, that we could potentially with the school going in, hook up the water lines at the front entrance over here.
Yeah, I need to check. They, they had to access those lines somehow. So there was a change out there, which, well, I am, I couldn't do it originally for a little three-quarter inch line, but now we might be able to come up with whatever they did.
Right. Cause I think the sprinkler system's already in out there. We just need to hook them into the water line. And so I think that's something, a project to look at.
Yes, yes. Correct.
Um, but in general, I know Eric and I have talked about if I can get some type of plan that shows all of our public spaces so we can kinda come up with a plan for addressing that. I mean, um, because we've had a few complaints and some of them are a little ragged.
Right. Yeah. And I think budget, when we start talking about budget, you know, when we start looking at, I mean, they're, they're not bad ideas, hiring somebody that can do specific things. And of course, you know, I have, I have an issue, wh- when you're paying your maintenance person X amount of dollars, paying somebody more to do this particular project than our police officers make is a little rough. So, um, you know, there's, there's still a boundary between what we wanna do budgetary wise. Now, hiring a landscaper is always an option. If anybody has a landscaper that will actually do it, we have the funds to do it. We can't find one.
Let me, yeah, let me, there, let's reach out on a couple and, and I'll bring a couple back. There are the, the, the bigger ones that do commercial spaces, like Brinkman and.
Try Myers. That, they do my parents something.
So, so I kinda wanna tag into that, um, in that as we're thinking about the maintenance building, that we also think about, you know, do we have an area for, um, mulch and or to grow flowers or things like that to help, you know, if that would offset some of the costs. So.
Native, native wildlife will take care of itself and he.
It will, but we have entrances that usually we plant flowers and things like that. So, you know.
Oh, I mean, like comb flower, echinacea, not like any of the crazy exotic stuff I love.
Sure.
So you're saying, you're saying as far as a, a storage point for some of these materials where you could.
Correct, so that we can.
Like building a garden.
No, save some.
Well, no, absolutely. And, and, and when you, when you design your maintenance building and you have wherever it goes, right? Usually the way that they design those is that they, they throw a lean-to on the backside of some type or it's not seen.
Run it exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and then you can put, you can put a few materials at the, in this case, you don't need as much as say some larger municipalities.
Right.
It'll give you the ability to load it up onto your trucks and off they go. So, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. You know, us bringing in a dump truck full of mulch and then, and then our team making, spreading it around the village and whatnot. So.
Correct. Saves you a lot more money to bags. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, a lot cheaper.
I just wanna keep that on the radar. I don't have anything specific in mind there.
Yeah, makes sense.
Uh, finally, uh, just pool season's wrapping up. I know it seems like we just opened it, but, uh, we're a month away from it closing, uh, less than a month. Uh, so I'll have a wrap-up meeting with John and the rest of the pool staff. Some things that we have already talked about is that as we close down for the summer, that we're gonna put aside the broken chairs, um, in a specific spot so that hopefully Brian during his slow season can do some repairs on the ones that we're gonna keep.
Mm-hmm.
The ones that are beyond repair, we're just gonna throw away because we have forty-six new ones coming.
Those frames are aluminum. We might be able to sell them to.
Yeah, yeah, possibly, yeah.
Absolutely.
Um, there, the ditch that we've been trying to get filled by the pumps over there, the pool guy's gonna come and do it at the end of the season, since our guy did not come through and do it. Um, so that will be fixed then. We still have a few issues with the baby pool and that the material is coming off still. I don't think it's quite as bad as it was, but, um, it's still.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to dress that again. Huh?
I thought it was worse.
I thought it was worse.
You thought it was worse.
See, now, I, I used to sit in it, I, I mean, and I would have it all over my suit, it is not doing that now, but.
Yeah. Right, I, I see a, I, the feet I've seen, there's a tinge of blue, but it's not like caked down like it was before, so I think we still need to look at that and talk to their.
Right.
Maybe it looks different.
And we're doing that as soon as the pool closes.
Um.
Yeah, and then the, I would take a look at those gardens too, cause if there's something not.
Well, it depends on the water level, what they're in.
Yeah, it sprays really high if the, if they're low, but if it's, if it's too, it has to be at the perfect level, so sometimes they shoot really high, and I prefer them not to shoot really high,
Yeah. If the water's low. Yeah.
Because then I can't sit there because it sprays me in the face.
Right.
So they're currently exactly where I would like them.
She'll talk about you.
It is currently about me.
She's, she's just the tester.
Even though they're blue.
I'm the tester.
But you don't think they look really ugly?
Oh, yeah, they do, but if I'm laying there, they spray me in the face, so it's perfect right now.
I'll get you a face shield from the O R that you can wear.
It is currently about comfort.
So.
But no, there, I do not believe there's anything wrong with them, it is based on the water level.
Okay.
But we'll keep checking.
I have a great advisor with a face shield, and I refuse to wear, I'll bring that in.
No, yeah, I have those, I should have worn one the other day, and it sprayed in the face.
All right, I got three more items.
Three more.
All right, um, we're talking about internet solutions for next year, we do have internet at the pool, however, it has gone down once or twice, and we're talking about how we can run our systems if.
I would suggest you, if I may, I would suggest you use your cell tower solution, and all the major providers sell some type of puck, and then you can connect it to it, they're pretty fast on five G stuff.
Yeah. I think that's what we're talking about, obviously, the other solution would be we use the iPads, we could do some other service on those, but we're looking into those options,
Yeah.
Which tagged into the phone system that's down there.
Which is getting shut down.
And if we can tie in the new building's phone system to that, to make it all one system, so that's just something that on the radar. And then finally, we are looking to upgrade the front desk to a square register system next year.
Yes.
So that they're doing cash and credit card all in one machine. Uh, Leah absolutely loves what's coming out of the concession stand and one report, very easy for her to read, she knows what the deposits are each day, um, so we are looking to upgrade that for next year.
And then we just need to make sure Jeff has all of that in the budget when we get ready to do it, um.
Correct. Yeah.
Are we doing okay with the pool?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can get more chairs?
Yeah, pool's going well. What?
We can get more chairs?
Yeah, I know.
We're gonna try, I would like to see about getting a slide for next year, so I think.
Yes. I think that's important.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
So when we get to finance, just make sure you have your list like ready to go.
Yep.
Um, just cause that'll make life easier.
Absolutely.
And then we can yell later, um, well, and I, I don't know if Parkland Fund, if you can use any of those funds for the slide, because it's pool, maybe that's a conversation for somebody else later, I'm just saying there is money in that too.
We probably, eh, eh, look, I'm fine using it, I think we just need legal to bless that usage, since it's a not truly public parkland, right?
Yeah, so.
It's like a quasi private.
Right, hey, I gotta ask.
And just so you know, I, I have not, I have not let it rest any type of new building down there, just letting it sleep, you know.
Always ask.
Exactly. Well, I mean, I think.
Snapping right now, but I'd still like to keep that on the radar, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But I think.
As soon as it is, you know, fiscally reasonable, I think that's.
Yeah. I think we could have a space down there that is financially, you know, good for the village, rental space, so.
Well, it's, you know, I, I, I'm gonna give my little two cents, I think you would rent the pool a lot more, I think you would have a lot more, um, income coming in for different things if we had that. I mean, let's just be honest, anybody can rent the pool, I, I understand, I'm not going through all of this, but it's a risk. I mean, if you wanna worry about it for four months leading up to it, whether or not it's gonna rain all day, because there is no alternative, so everybody that thought this was such an easy, you know, whatever.
Right.
I rent the pool, I pay for the pool, I do all of this, and then it rains, and then my event is ruined.
Right.
So we don't have a structure that we could actually go into had it rained.
Yeah.
So, you know, for everybody that wants to rent the pool, more power to you, but just know that there's no options.
That'd potentially be a space than what we'll have in addition to what we have.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely, so, I mean, it, when you start thinking about things like that, I absolutely, everybody's like, do you have a backup plan? I'm like, yeah, tense, I mean, there is no backup plan in the village, so when you start thinking about it, and I'm not, I, I know I just looked at her, so I can't do this right now. But when you start thinking about it, a structure over there would have at least been something, so.
Or you save that money and get your bill.
No event backup plan.
Yeah, there's no.
Yeah, I just, you know, someone will take that, uh, that soundbite, someone will take that sound.
Yes, that's tense, yeah. I know.
Which is no backup, what's going on with the cost?
Yeah, the village has, no, no, it's so.
I just wanna make that, you know.
Shelter's needed, there are a lot of poor and event spaces there.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
This is, this is more of a larger capital.
I think, I.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it would be.
But I think the other part to that is, is it's not gonna happen in six months, so if you aren't talking about it right now, every, every month you wait is gonna be added on to it, so.
Yeah.
And it's, and.
Yeah, I'm down a hundred percent, but it, I, I think we need to.
Have a building.
The, yeah, A, the building is, is this building is a much bigger priority, and then we need to ideate exactly what we want it to be.
Right.
And, and, you know, dream our dreams to that, because, you know, maybe it should be something that is three or four season usable, right? Because if someone wants an event space that they can use in December, like maybe carriage rides should be out of that space, right?
Absolutely.
Because that would be a great place for carriages to go in and pick up at the building and hosting, hosting a space and, right?
And then regardless where it's at, safety should be our top concern, that's it.
Wait, wait, safety is also important.
Again, it's a discussion, it's a, it's a discussion.
But, yeah, it's all part of that discussion, but, but first we need to know what we want out of it.
Absolutely.
Right, once we know what we want out of it, then we can dream the dream and then figure out how to make it work.
Right.
That's, but I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah.
I am too.
I feel like y'all are against me, I'm just.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred percent.
No, but I, I.
It's a process, I get it, the other big thing is that we can't be doing it during the summer, right?
Again.
It has to be a winter, fall, winter project.
And I think that's the other part of that discussion, you, you're gonna have some shutdown period for your pool, depending on what the extent of your doing, where you're doing it. This is pop very possible, given constructions, so, yeah.
All right, not to cut you off, but you're done, you spent too much money.
You're done. David, tell us about safety.
All right, so safety, couple things going on, um, uh, Var sent me a couple of quotes, and like suggestions for like the, um, little like address street signs or address signs, I've not forgotten about it, I'm still looking, I still just need to take some time to really dig into it and look at it, um, I know we were discussing, I, when I, when I first got here, we were discussing, um, the interpretation of the leash law, um, so what is the, what is your legal minds interpretation on that?
Of the, of what, our current, our current leash law?
Yeah.
That.
Like is there room for improvement, is there, you know?
Yeah, if you want it in black letter law, that says you have to have your dog on a leash outside your property, then we should amend it.
Okay, I, I do believe that was what the poll largely indicated.
But I think it's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm bringing that, I'm gonna be on the agenda for legislation, so we can do that apart, I have a lot of stuff to bring for everybody to look at, but I, I think it should.
Good.
So.
Okay, I think you could enforce it now.
Right, there's a lot of things.
There's some details.
There's a lot of things to think about, I had a couple residents email me and said, okay, so if we're talking open spaces, what about the homes that are by the school? So there's a lot of little like fine print that we need to think about, uh, but, I mean, you can't argue with what the residents want with that many. It was a secure poll, it was double what we had on our survey, so we'll just look at them.
Are you worried about the pool?
The, the wording, the wording of it though was, do you want a leash law, or do you not want a leash law?
I mean, the other.
Are you worried about C P F?
Yeah.
And, and without any, hold on.
I know, there was another option.
Oh, or a leash law with publics, with, with, with a dog, dog park kind of idea.
Yeah.
The problem is, it didn't specify what leash law means, right? So, so we don't really know.
Well, we can get more specific if you want.
We don't really know what people want out of it, because we already have a.
You can say that all day long, Brian.
We already have a leash law.
What we say is that when we, when we do the larger survey.
But it's not what residents want right now.
Well, no, no, I, I could, I could, I think you get to that detail, I think you get that detail.
I, I don't, I don't even know that we know.
You could enforce, you could enforce what you have right now.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I can enforce a whole larger discussion.
Hold on, let Jesse talk.
Yeah, you can enforce, you can enforce reasonable control.
Yep.
Right now, the problem being, what, there's not gonna be a crime unless something happens.
Right.
Right, and that's the problem.
That's the problem, but, so you're saying, well, that dog's not under reasonable control, but the dog's just walking ahead of their own.
Yeah, that's an issue.
I. Or the dog's chasing them all.
Well, right, so that's the question, so is that, but of course, if the dog bit somebody, you could cite them for not having the dog under reasonable control.
Right, right.
Right, but then you're.
That's like waiting for somebody to get shot before you do take precautions, yeah.
Well, unfortunately though, eh, it is, you know, eh, you, I'm trying to not get hyperbolic, but to, to have laws that punish when there is no harm is dangerous.
But to have no precaution that put your resident's safety at risk.
But society is the precaution, right? And, and the, the voice that says reasonable control is what's required.
You can dismiss it all you want, you're, you're too.
It's not dismissive.
It, I'm not dismissive, I'm saying that reasonable control is the, is the statute, and it's, it is super common because it's generally considered how a civil society works, right? Because it shouldn't be a crime if I'm not causing harm, right? Like the, you know, people will tell you that the reason.
But it is causing harm, Brian, do you have emails of multiple residents with dog attacks? No, that'll be brought to legislation and you can burn on it.
Bring it, but, but, but what I would argue, what I will already tell you my argument back is that that dog wasn't under reasonable control, and that person should be cited, right?
But there's some clarification, I guess.
Uh, I mean, we can as a policy dictate what reasonable control means, right? That is something that safety can, can, can meet and set a definition to, right? And then direct the, you know, then we can pass a resolution to direct the, the administration to adopt that as the policy. But to say a dog has to be on a leash is, is limiting in ways that I feel are not necessary.
I think it, I think it's.
Especially here, and I'll, I'll add an especially, because one of the things I've seen said more than once in this is that if your unleashed dog comes up to my leash dog, and is social, my dog on the leash will eat your dog, I've seen that said more than once in these Facebook threads, and then the dog that's on the leash isn't under your control, right? That's not reasonable control, even on a leash, so, so the argument should, again, should be about reasonable control, not tied to a thing.
So I think, I think with this, when, when we talk, we got two things going, when we do a proper survey, and we have the questionnaire and the instrument developed properly, right? You can get into the details of those items, right? And we, we can, an instrument is very important, how we design, because questions can be leading, there's all kinds of ways to do it, and there's an appropriate way to do it versus a not appropriate way to do it. And we did the last one appropriately, and we, we do another full one appropriately, so that aside, we can get to the crux of your, of the question, right? See, honestly, with a, with a good sample, which we had last time, and I have no doubt that they'll do it again, but for, based on, especially your chief's opinion, right? And on the rest of staff, and, you know, how we've experienced this, our current law is, is good, right? It is what's standard, and, and, if I may, that, that is a discussion of, for council, and obviously a longer discussion is necessary, and I think you gotta bring in your experts and the pros and cons and the devils and the details to how you design it.
No, but it's not. No.
There's no doubt that things can be done, but your chief has said the leash law is good the way it is, and you can ask him again up to his face, he stated this, so we, that, we can, I, I think.
We're not, we're not here for the opinion of our police chief, while I love Chief Duff one hundred percent, we're here for the opinion of our residents and what they wanna see happen. Not your personal opinion, not your personal opinion.
But I, the only comment I'm gonna make.
I mean that in all due respect, no.
The only comment I'm gonna make is this, um, Facebook is great until it's not.
Until it's.
Not, that's not a, that's not a disturbing.
We have.
And I agree one thousand percent, but it is a way that we can properly gauge what our residents want, and that is what we're here for.
I, I.
You've got to remember that.
I, I agree with you, all accept the use of the word properly.
Yes.
Right, because again, just your example of your survey, the net, the first question should be, how many of these people are aware of what our current leash law is? Because your, your question is, do you want a leash law, we have a leash law, it's on the books, so the first question is, is that leash law enough?
No.
Well, that's, again, your opinion, and maybe the opinion of many of those survey respondents, but.
So we'll find out, we'll ask that next, I mean, that's what we do, like, it's huge and important.
But, yeah, but again, it, it takes, it takes more than.
But not on Facebook.
The question should, the question should be, the question should be, do, do, do residents want every dog, any dog that is taken off of property to be on a leash?
No, even if you're allowed to do it, they seem secure. So, well, okay.
There you go.
Not a leash law, that's not speaking.
There you go, that, 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 that's a reasonable question.
What, what did you say, what was it backwards?
Does, does, do the, do the residents want the law to be, if your dog is taken off your property, it must be on a leash?
Okay.
No matter.
That would, and then that would be, that would make it all.
Yeah, and, and under all circumstances.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not even clarification, I guess, I didn't get you on out.
Right, well, and it's, it's, and I think you hit it on the head, I, I, there's not gonna be, but unless they're in the school, but unless they're in this, but unless they're in this, and.
And you need to clarify that, yeah, and whichever they're aware.
And here's what, and I'm just gonna say this, if that's the case, if you think having a dog park is a good idea, that does not make sense to me. So let's just go throw a crap ton of dogs in the middle of this with all these people without a leash, you're, you're saying I want a leash law unless they're in a dog park.
And, and, and the school properties. School property's not our property, it's their policy that dictates how people handle the policy.
There you go. Thank you for answering that, cause I wondered that.
Yeah, that, yeah, that.
What is, what is the policy there?
They, they, I don't know what the school district is, they probably like, they don't.
So we probably should find that out, because that is, that is probably the number one area that people use.
Yeah, well, well.
There's a lot of them there. There's a lot of them over there.
Yeah, and, and, and quite frankly, when we were at, when we were at the, the pool for the event, uh, I looked over, and that's a partially enclosed area, and they use it as a de facto dog park.
But we.
It seems to work quite well in that regard, nice wide open spaces, I assume they clean up after the dogs, right?
Right.
So there has to be some outlet, uh, and there has to be some ability to do that somewhere, right? So, what, much more discussion would be happening.
I don't think a small dog park could be.
I think the maintenance of it and the turf and all of that kinda stuff is, all I can ask is after I'm out, after I'm out, because all I see is dogs still fighting.
To fence.
My little dog, my big dog, your dog was mean to my dog, and I have no favor for that.
Well, that's why you don't take your dog, if your dog's not sociable, you don't.
But people don't do that.
But they don't get socially at all.
Right, that's true.
But that rolls right back to somebody understanding the reasonable control of your dog, your last statement was somebody understanding the reasonable control of their dog. So if, if you're accepting reasonable control within the confined dog park space, why can't you accept reasonable control outside of that space?
And there you actually put a greater amount of density in the dog park, if you want a good example, you want a good example of, of the dog park.
I'm, I'll put that, the actual wording, and we'll give that for you, Brian, so.
Metro Parks, Metro, no, it.
For you, no.
So, so Metro Parks runs a, a, a new double dog park right up north of, um, Watson Road, and I would say call them and see how, they're, they've had all kinds of challenges with maintenance and how that works. So we're on a wonderful run, it's, it's, uh, I believe it's Metro Parks and it's right north of Walnut, so it's right up of Walnut, the new Metro Parks is north of Walnut. Call them and ask them, they, they set one up, uh, right before COVID, wonderful dog park, but they've had a lot of challenges running it, and if you want, if you want a good two years of, of info on how to run a dog park, I think they're a wonderful resource for you to go with, but, but again, and, and we can have a wider discussion, and, and we did with an earlier council, surveys on Facebook are not real surveys. They're not real surveys, period, they're not good instruments.
Jesse, are they legally inappropriate to engage residents?
But you're only getting.
I mean, sure, they're, they're certainly legal, and there's only.
But it's not the issue.
But legal's not the issue, the legal is, can I say this?
Legal is the issue. Yeah, please.
Okay, from a scientific standpoint, you have a skewed model of people that only have internet access and choose to be on Facebook.
No, and I'm not just arguing that.
Model, but what I'm saying is, your sample size.
Yeah. Which one?
It's, it's, it's.
How is it wrong?
It's not broad, but it's not, it's not a good sample, because you're not pulling the village, you're pulling the people
Yes, we really need to talk about it. Yeah. It's not, it's not scientifically viable.
That are in the village that choose to be in that Minerva Park group that choose to be on Facebook, so it is a skewed sample size.
Yeah, yeah, so, so to give you.
So we need to find a way to be able to ask residents all over, maybe adding a poll to our newsletters.
We have one. We, we, no, 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 we have one.
So we don't only get our resident feedback once a year, I think that's, so, I think it's.
We did one, we did one, we did one, and you have to, you have to control it, and unfortunately, because there's a control factor to it, and making sure that your sample size and the people that answer are, your village people are appropriate, are not answering more than once, blah, 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 blah.
Absolutely, you can take their security measures on Facebook.
No, you can't.
Yes, you can.
So, anyway.
You can make fake Facebook profiles, you can use your kids' profile.
If, if, if I may, we, we, we did this, we did this, this is how, this is experts.
You guys do really need someone's like that one.
I, I, um, believe it or not, the answer is yes, because I just watched it with my own personal thing, the wife did it, the husband did it, and the kid posted it.
I know, I know. I refuse to buy the money, but if you guys don't wanna look at the numbers of what your residents voting, and we will get more clear.
So, Nikki, you.
All because of my wife.
We did it, we did it, and we can do it again, we will do it again, and you can get, no, but, I mean, this is the survey we're talking about, and you, the reason they take a while to do, and the reason people really don't run them more than once is, A, there's a cost to doing it appropriately and properly, okay?
If you guys can just use that. Do whatever you want with it.
And that's the reason, we can't, you can't just throw one up on Facebook and get it appropriately back.
Well, in, no, in fairness, you know that it's, here, here's, okay, wait, whoa, whoa, in fairness, you do know that people do have a concern about it.
No, I will, I continue to use that, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I will continue to use that.
You're, you're, you're welcome.
So Facebook does at least give you that.
Correct.
In my opinion, but I think you could post absolutely anything, and of course, if it's a, I mean, you could throw something up there about the amphitheater, and I will promise you, you will have thirty people tell you how much they hate that amphitheater. I mean, you could throw something up there about the amphitheater and I will promise you, you will have thirty people tell you how much they hate that amphitheater. So, and, but it's just because that structure over there. I mean, again, you can throw that up there and people that live over there don't want it, but the people over here that do. So just because twelve people don't want a structure over there because it's in their backyard or they're worried about safety, the people over here would love to have Billy's birthday party. So, the, the problem with Facebook is, you're only getting this much of the people that want to be vocal in there. It, it allows you to know that there are people that are not happy. I will agree with that. There, the Facebook at least lets you know that those people are there.
But you don't know if it's.
Majority of our Facebook audience.
But that's a minority.
I will, I will throw out one, one other thought.
In our survey and we'll go.
Yeah, and the survey is a great place.
Majority of a Facebook audience, because there's eight hundred people in that group and like sixty or a hundred people responded.
Almost seventy percent.
But, but how many, how many of you, eight hundred?
But that's a small amount.
That's a small sample size of the eight hundred.
So in the Facebook group that saw the, that saw the thing, how many actually responded?
Didn't vote, it's just the same.
No, that means they didn't vote. That's not the same as a, that's not a, that means, yeah, that, that changes the math entirely. However, I will throw out one more thought in this, and that is that.
I wake up every morning to argue with you guys.
That is the.
But it's math, you can't argue with statistics.
I'm not saying.
Governing by referendum is not what this body is about.
Bringing this and saying, this is what we're doing, we have to have a face show cuz of this. I'm saying, this was a great way to engage, I'm going to continue to use this method of communication. That's something we need to look at. So say you say, okay, so, but not everybody's on Facebook, so we add it to our sur- let me finish, please. Thank you, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
So now we say, okay, so it's gotta be something we put on our survey, right? We've heard the residents' concerns, now let's do it a little bit differently. Spit it any way you want, just say that, we can do that, and I will plan to do that. But you have to address those things.
Again, with everything you just said, except the word great. It is not a great way to do this, it is a way to do this.
Disagree with multiple words you use, Brian, we're not gonna do that now.
All we want, but look, I'm trying to tell you that I agree with you in many, many ways, however methodology matters. And, and lastly, I will finish the thought that I had started before you chimed in it over me. And that is that this body is not about governing by referendum, right? We are elected people for a purpose. Not just to, to do what the referendum says, right? That's why there are other rights of referendum. But we as this body make the best choices we as this body can make. So, cuz if all we are is, is the, you know, the vehicle of the referendum, this body is useless. And, and we should just disband it because we could, we could write that charter and just let it all pass.
Everybody has to vote every time.
By, by referendum, and that is not a way to go.
In, in Councilperson Trust's defense, I, I can't imagine there are gonna be too many people bored or malicious enough to make a bunch of fake profiles, join a silly group and then. Sue a poll, I will say.
But you have, you, you would be surprised cuz they've had to remove people off there, but number two, you have multiple people in multiple houses. There are houses that have six people that are on there and that is provable.
Residents and they count.
They do, they do, I'm not arguing that.
Go to the next thing.
But you, let's just, let's do it in a statistically, mathematically accurate way, so I'll ask.
We're gonna put it on the survey, so that way we can see, and then we'll get more specific.
That, right.
We'll ask exactly more questions on polls. Again, I'm going to continue to use that, we'll just do it in a structured way, but it does allow us to kind of fine tune some stuff.
So the summarization is, it, the, the, um. The chief feels that the law is enforceable as it stands currently, however, we could tweak it to make it more.
Yeah, to what you want.
Responsive, more representative of what the, uh, pulse of the village is, and that is.
But then it also means wherever it is now, and that was another concern, it needs to be upheld. So these dog attacks, these.
Enforced.
Uh, you know, that should be being enforced, and if it's not, that makes me need to come back to that out, so.
That's the key, is people don't call it in.
Right.
Then they go on Facebook.
I highly doubt that, but.
Well, he's the one that can give you the stats and the calls.
I'm certain that they would, people will not call it in if a dog is running wild and nothing happens. That's a problem.
Right.
So, it's very possible that if a dog was running around out of control and nobody was bit, somebody could go and cite that person and that would. That would start to move things along in the way where they are under reasonable control. But nobody calls it unless there's a problem, and then it's too late. If it's not too late, if they call, it isn't an issue.
Mm-hmm.
True, okay, that's about the summarization, I said, P.
We, we clearly have an issue with people, dogs getting out of their.
Mm-hmm.
There's currently one on, yeah.
Look, it's down there. Um.
There's currently one on Facebook right now.
Anything else for safety?
Um, not at the moment, I just need to do a deeper dive into those like, um, adverse things.
About like the basketball court or anything like that, are we doing okay with that?
Um, Chief Del usually writes like his monthly like paragraph of things. I'm not, I'm not reading it yet, I've not seen it yet, but.
Yeah, he actually was on vacation, not on vacation, he was at a chief's conference last week.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so he is back, uh, he's probably downstairs, he was back yesterday, so, uh, we will be getting his report, um.
Yeah, I just knew I had this, I haven't gotten any preview of anything.
Yes, no, I would expect it Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, and then. Okay, so we're good on that. I'm gonna skip legislation, we'll go straight to that. Mine's gonna be simple. Leaf bids are due on Monday, so I don't know if, if, um, we're expecting Brad's or not, and then we had somebody else pick it up as well. So those are due Monday, I do not remember what time, so, um, and then we can get together, send it out, because Thursday I would love to have. Who in here, um, the best one, so, and I don't know if we'll get any other ones, but we did have two people.
We have two, so.
No, we have two people that requested the information, so I've not seen an actual, I haven't seen an actual bid, I don't believe we have one yet, but I would not expect it till Monday. Um, Aquadoc, I have, um, been in contact with them several times. They are getting me an estimate for fountains, they're giving me an estimate for aerators, they are giving me an estimate to treat the three lakes, not the fourth one. So I would expect that in the very near future. Some of them, um, it's not really likely that you can put a fountain because it's too, uh, not deep enough. Same thing with aerators, so he's giving us the best option in his recommendation. Getting the electric to those places are what's gonna be a little more difficult. Um, there is the option to tie into some of the houses that are right there, I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna work, but they are getting, cuz that's above my mental brain right now. Um, but they will be getting us estimates for all three. So expect that in the next little bit, and then you guys can pick apart, what do we want in each one?
That's all that's out there.
Yeah.
This is all right, though.
Yeah. So he was checking to see how deep they are because that's important. But anyways, um, so the healthy part of the lake that you were talking about a little bit, obviously not just that, but weeds, but that is already in the works, he was out there. Um, we have been in, this goes along with what Eric was saying, but we have been discussing with moving companies to get us out of this building, where we're gonna go. We have been getting prices for pods to store some of the equipment. Um, we are in contact with getting information about possible trailers, as well as, um, some commercial space. We're trying to get estimates for commercial space of renting properties, so there's a lot of moving parts. The biggest concerns are where we're gonna go for our council meetings and where we're gonna go for mayor's court. So those are all things that we are working with. I have reached out to Blendon Township, um, so we will have a lot more information as Eric discussed. Um, but those are some of the background things that you guys may or may not know is going on, but those are things we're working on. And that's all I have because I'm. Also trying to, yeah, we're, we're trying to get out, to get this done.
Here you go. Uh, legislation, we'll just go through what's, uh, what's, what we got on the, on the docket here. So ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-two, uh, this is pooper scoopers, right?
Good enough.
All right. Anybody got any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, we're on our third reading.
Third reading, so it'll be a vote for passage this time around.
Okay.
Ordinance, accepting certain bid from Weaver Commercial Contract for remodeling inspection of the Minerva Park Building, so this is, uh. First reading, intent to pass as an emergency, so this is the, the bid on the deal.
We are planning on reading three times?
Uh, we are, it says first reading.
No, 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 uh, three readings over the course of the month.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll get three readings in. Uh, do we, do we all have copies of that bid?
Uh, we attached, we not the, uh, let me, let me find the paperwork, the architect's back on Monday.
Okay.
We're gonna, I'm gonna send a summary anyways for everyone to review as part of this, so, because there, again, there's the alternate question, I wanna make sure that's answered prior to us. Sending out some stuff, but you'll have stuff by the time we meet.
Okay. And then my only other question in that is that in the past, when dealing with new contractors, we've done some amount of due diligence on them. And while I know this is our only option at the moment.
Yeah.
Have, have we completed that or will we have completed?
We get some, I, I know the architect did some due diligence, um, you know, as far as this, I'll, I'll get whatever his summary is.
Okay.
They, they, they've done a number of mid-large, small projects and.
Works for me.
Yeah.
All right, second reading of leaf pickup and we're, bids are due on Monday, so provided we actually get something, we should have some names for that by then. And it's a second reading. Next up, uh, entering a contract with Jacobs Engineering for the Lake Master Plan, second reading. Any questions, comments, concerns on that?
And everybody should have all that documentation, if somebody doesn't have it, let me know.
Yep. Uh, rules of council, amending the calendar.
Okay, so let's talk about that for thirty seconds.
Yeah.
Um, just please make sure you guys read that before Thursday, if you guys want some adjustments to it. Um, Barb and I worked on it together, Barb mostly. Um, so, but if there's anything wrong, then I take the fault for that. Um, but it basically states that it'll be the first Thursday of the month. Um, so rules of council will actually be updated as well as the calendar.
Right.
So make sure that the wording is correct as to when you guys want those meetings, but then there's also some additional details, as you can see, about the September date. As well as the December date. So we would do that on December eighth instead of the fifteenth, and then we would have that first meeting, the Thursday before that as the. So just double check that you guys are okay with all of those dates, um, and that the calendar is okay before Thursday. Um, because we would intend to waive all of readings and only read it once because that's gonna take effect in.
Yeah.
Couple weeks.
Yeah.
So please read that, if there's anything you guys don't like, let us know before Thursday.
What was the date of September, first of September?
Have no eye, the September third?
I have to scroll back down to.
Is it first or eighth?
It would be the fir-, okay, so then, that, we're changing all of it.
The dates will now be nine eight, nine twenty-two, and December will be twelve eight.
Yeah, and then the, the work session though would then be the third of September.
May, I may ask to.
That's.
Or not the third, whatever.
First reading was to be the seventh, maybe we'll see where he just wants to do it on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
That would make more sense rather than two back to backs.
Yeah, okay, all right, um, yeah, it'll be fine. Okay. Okay, any, anybody have questions or concerns to bring up on that one right now? No? The only one's going twice?
Sorry, can I go back to the lake one real quick?
Go for it.
So we're just, at this point, we're just saying, um, we're not going through the pieces that we wanna approve and it, we're just saying.
We're gonna run them for a plan.
Up to this amount.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, it's, it's really, there's a fair amount of investigation and, you know, that needs to be done just to come up with the.
Right, with the plans, yes, yes.
And so we are authorizing them to go through those steps and then present to us, here's your menu of what you want to do. And then we would have to take a second action to actually do those things.
Right, but they listed all the stuff in there that they are proposing to do for that seventy-five thousand. Do we discuss at some point if we want all of those, or is it just an all or nothing?
We have not, at this moment, it would be an all or nothing.
Yeah, and I, and I think that the dangerous part is since you don't know what you don't know, I would say you should, the reason they go through the process and all the due diligence is so that. They bring you back all the information so you can make an appropriate decision on what to do with your lake. If you cut things out without knowing, then you may be cutting your nose off the side of your face.
Okay, okay.
So, here's.
So we're approving seventy, up to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Out of whatever we think it's gonna cost us.
My advice would be, if there's something in that list that you're concerned about, bring it up in the next, yeah, call it out in the next week or two.
I just wanted to know if.
Yeah.
If, what the, if there was a time to discuss that or if there was.
Yes, it's now.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
That's it.
All right, anybody got anything else?
Just super briefly with the leaf bids, whichever one we end up choosing, we should be sure that they have stuff that was marked on the last times, like a makeup day.